All right, agenda is adopted. We have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements, so we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone here care to speak under public comment about anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Please, come on up.
When would you like me to talk about the fence issue? Now or during public hearings?
Uh, this would be the opportunity for it. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jason Wolf, 2672 Meadowridge Drive. This has to do with the fence variance issue. Just so I understand what happened last time, because I couldn't be here because of work issues. Was there, you guys voted to absolutely not do the variance period, not to be heard above again, correct?
We vote, we voted not to approve it as it was presented. It doesn't mean we could never look at it again.
Okay. I want to start with this.
Do you want?
Josh Byrd sent me a very relieving text message saying that, basically in general, that he'll have it covered from the last, what was it, July, when you had the big Niagara deal. During that meeting, I also had two other city council members, that make three, that voted that the safety of my stepson outweighs property issues. What happened?
I can address that. And we, it was kind of, it was unanimous from everybody to not approve it based on the fact that, the reason we were considering it was because you had mentioned you needed to put an ADU on the property at some point. It was relayed to us that the property as it stands now has plenty of room for an ADU to go on.
Okay, so I did, I did review that video and I looked at it. Did the council member and board members take into account that I have a 20-foot deck on the back of my house?
You weren't here, which understandably, so we just went with what was provided to us, which was that there was sufficient room for the ADU if needed.
Well, there is a 20-foot deck on the back of my house. There is not sufficient room, especially if I, if I build an ADU alone. You know, with the complications of down syndrome and death and heart issues and heart surgeries and stuff like that, I have no idea how long I'm going to be able to keep it. God forbid that happens. However, which means that if I were to put the ADU pretty much basically in the middle of my backyard, the property value won't sell. It simply won't sell. So I can't put an ADU where you guys appear to be willfully or really badly just placed it in the middle. It can't happen. I won't be able to put an ADU there and then possibly sell it 20 years out of the road. Secondly, Josh Byrd, Byrd addressed the fact that he's not going to play with an idea of a possibility of an ADU. Well, that's a double standard and one-way road because you guys have planned maybe to do something possibly to keep the 32 acres in the back of my land, but a possibility of development for money. He wanted to put a road back there last year, and that was shot down by the Lingeros neighborhood as a petition. Because I signed the petition, he wanted to put a road back there, which the road would not be a very logical useful money because as a police officer retired and my wife being paramedic of 14 years, going through emergency vehicle operations course, the fastest point from A to B is a straight line. You start putting stop signs in there and curves and corners using a fire truck that's 45 feet long. You're not going to get any faster back into that neighborhood than you would if you just go around Lingeros curtain. It won't be any faster. Trust me, I did it for eight years. So putting a road back there is pointless. So back to my other thing, if you possibly want to do something back there, so you want to keep that land, but then you're going to hinder me from possibly putting an ADU there, how is that fair?
So, I mean, as long as I'm involved in the council, there won't be any road going down there. The, if I, if I remember correctly, the, it was a pretty unanimous council decision not to do that. I don't know, some of us may have been supportive of it just in thought at one point, just as an idea. But yeah, the neighborhood did come out pretty strongly against it, and we listened and we're happy to not do that. So, as far as what's gonna, is what the plan is for the land that you're referring to, I'll let Rich or Tom.
It's already wetlands and stormwater management ponds that were required for the development of this subdivision and, and homes around it, so.
So do we, is that something we need access to as a city to maintain?
Well, yeah, we have to maintain, we have to be able to get to them, so we can't load any.
If I may speak on that.
Please.
I don't see Cory here. My wife talked to Cory yesterday, and Cory had mentioned that in 2014, they had, had to maintain or do some work back there. Within the meeting that was last recorded, when you guys voted that not to go up the variance, there was, it was hard to hear, but you guys said that there are multiple access points, and when you do go back there, you have to take down some vegetation. I studied that plot of land for a very long time, and I believe Cory lied to my wife because if you had to take down vegetation in order to get access back there in 2014, every single tree back there is over 15 years old. So if you have to take down vegetation, there's no new vegetation back there. So did you guys access and maintain it in 2014?
Today, we have done extensive maintenance on any ponds. We've done removal of all the tier vegetation around the outlets, fixing, broken casting, that type of thing. But someday, as these ponds fill with sediment, we'll have to go in probably at wintertime and excavate. And for that, they'll need expensive access around the perimeter for the equipment to even get there to reach out and remove that sediment. But, I mean, most of these ponds are on the order of 20 years old or less, something like that. 10, 15 down years down the road is when we'll need that. But to date, everything is still new and relatively still empty of sediment.
And that's not a maybe, that's an inevitability.
Well, yeah, that's what they're there for, is to collect that sediment, keep it moving down the street.
So what would the potential solution be if we did want to do something? Is there a way that we could do something and still provide the Wolf family access?
Probably, I mean, it's just, I don't even know how they approach it because we haven't had to think about it yet. But we always reserve room vegetative buffers and for that eventuality, not just an access point, but they have to be able to get around all the things. And these are, if I remember, long skinny ponds, so, yeah, I think we can figure out something. We always have to, there's always some problem, it's just more money and more time.
But that's why the lot was designed the way it was to begin with, you believe?
I suspect that's part of it. I also suspect the lots were laid out to get as many lots as possible, but making them the minimum size. And what was left over was needed for pond because they had no use for it.
Josh, you were mentioned a couple times, you want to?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. And so I was just pulling up the messages too, just so that I could recall exactly. I mean, I, like I had mentioned too, I mean, I appreciated the back and forth, appreciated the information shared. And what I expressed was, and I still believe it, you know, would, would have, would have the back of your kiddo based on, and, and you did send me the policy or the draft language of something you had sent about just making sure that it was an extraordinary circumstance, not a precedence. Because that was, and I think I alluded to that in the last, during the meeting when we talked about it to make sure, and I don't believe it was a precedence issue. So, I mean, I fully agree with that side of it. And I think also what I did say is we have to go through the process. I think that you would have support, but we have to go through the process. I love your rationale for the extraordinary reasons for your son, and thus not a precedence issue. And then later on, after the last meeting, what I specifically said was, based on the information, info presented and rationale to approve or not approve, it seemed to make the most sense to apply the consistent practice we have in place. If we could somehow, this is where then the other options could apply. You know, if you wanted to pursue purchasing the land or going through that route or purchasing a, a part of it, that's where I think even the mayor suggested that, you know, we, at that point, I didn't approve what was presented, but that doesn't close the door to further conversations or further discussions to be contemplated or potentially approved or not approved.
The thing is though is that, I don't want to take up all 15 minutes, I know you guys have a lot of stuff to do with it, is that it really, really bothers me that the two unanimous votes where you guys decided to go through Niagara by ignoring two ordinances. Y'all, you, you knew, but y'all four voted to ignore those two ordinances to go through with Niagara for money. They're gonna, and that just seems extremely bad, but yet you won't allow a variance for just 1,000 feet of land granted. Like I said the first time, I did it backwards, I apologize, learned my lesson, but don't. It feels like you're choosing money over the safety of my stepson. And I just can't humanly get behind that. You know what I mean?
I do, I do, and I, I think I can speak with a lot of confidence that that's not the case at all on any, for anyone that's sitting up here. I mean, you can't compare the situation to Niagara, they're two completely different scenarios whatsoever. I don't know that we want to rehash that, but that's okay, we can disagree.
You guys already did it. So I don't want to take up any more time. You have a lot more points to go over and, like, talk about it without me coming every Thursday or whatever, then I'll do that. But the other proposal I came here specifically to do is to either completely buy the 2 acres of land, because I will do that for my stepson if allowed, or buy the 1,000 square feet, or find another way to get a variance, I don't know. Does it sound like a possible variance is still possible? I don't know, but.
If.
Just every month, having anxiety to, to mistake my mistake that I made, to rip out my fence because I thought it was part of my property with the way that it's been maintained for 20 years that it's been there.
I, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't, like I said, I wouldn't close the door on it completely. I mean, I, I think we would have to see some different information. Yeah, I would encourage you to work with Tom and Rich to try and come up with a solution. If there's a, a solution that helps you and also helps the city at the same time, I think this, this is a council that'd be willing to take a look at it. But, you know, you had asked about our rationale previously, and that was what the rationale was, that's why we didn't pass it, so. And did, I understand right that you've contacted a lawyer and are starting litigation?
No.
No.
I said that that would be the next step if I can't get that, and I thought it was clear.
Yeah, and you may have been, it just might have been my understanding. I'd be more than happy to meet with you one-on-one outside of the meeting to discuss it. And I'm sure any of us would be on the city council. Thank you. Does anyone else here to speak under public comment? If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Any changes to consent agenda?
More changes to the consent agenda?
Any more changes to consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a public hearing tonight. Is this for a presentation on the vacation? You want us to jump around a little bit?
Tom should be letting me in here just a second. I'll be ready. Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is a request to vacate a drainage and utility easement application submitted by RNF Properties. A little background is that RNF Properties, who is the owner of the Alco Speedway, they own approximately 155 acres. The legal description is Lot 1, Block 2, Alco Marketplace. This plat was, platted, filed in 2008, and there were large drainage and utility easements dedicated during the plat of Alco Marketplace that encumbered most of the westerly portion of that lot, 1 Block 2, including several areas, areas of upland, which would be eligible for development. Recently, RNF Properties completed a wetland delineation, and they determined the exact boundaries of the wetlands on the westerly and southwestern portions of the property. This was done in anticipation of a proposed development, proposed to be platted as the preserve. New drainage and utility easements will be established through the new plat, and the new easements as proposed in, the proposed plat will better define the city's need for drainage and utility easements. They cover the more accurate boundaries of the wetlands as well as drainage and utility ponds on the property in addition to some additional easements as well. This is a, the current proposed plat of the preserve. We were hoping to have that before you tonight, but there has been a little delay in bringing that forward to you. So we did decide to continue to move forward with scheduling. We already published the public hearings associated with the vacation of the drainage and utility easement. Minnesota statute does provide for vacations of public rights of way and easements through Minnesota statute 412851. The statute defines the petition requirements, publication, and notice requirements, and also a requirement of a public hearing. The city council is being asked to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation of drainage and utility easements and adopt resolution 23-59 vacating the easements as requested. And I'd like to note that the easement vacation is conditioned upon the simultaneous recording of the plat of the preserve. So if the preserve plat is not filed, the easements that are there today would remain in place.
Anyone have any questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:21. Is anyone here to speak for the public hearing? No? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:21. Any discussion or any motions?
Motion to approve resolution 2359 vacating drainage and utility easements.
It's a motion by Kate. I'll second it, second by me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. It's general business. First item, the call sale for equipment certificates. Who wants to tackle this one?
Yeah, so as council is aware, we had purchased a number of pieces of equipment last year. We are recommending that the council issue pursuant to its previous plans equipment certificates for two of those pieces of equipment in the amount of $830,000. Rebecca is here tonight from Ellers to explain the equipment certificate issuance process. We haven't done it for a while, so.
Good evening, Rebecca Hertz from Ellers. And as I'm introduced, what's before you tonight is to call for the sale of 830,000 of general obligation equipment certificates, Series 2023A, for reimbursing the city for the dump truck, or the tandem dump truck and the fire tanker truck. And then, to the extent that we are able to, we will also be maximizing under statute the amount that could be reimbursed for some, or used to reimburse for parts of the utility service vehicle. Debt service on these bonds would be paid for by ad foreign property taxes. We are proposing a 10-year term for the equipment certificates, that is the maximum term. And after discussions with staff agreed that that resulted in a levy, a maul, a annuity that everybody was comfortable with. The bonds would mature starting in 2025, and then, or first maturity is 2025, final maturity in 2033. The bonds would be callable, which means you could prepay them as of February 31st or any date thereafter without having a penalty. As we go through the process, some of you that have been on the council before may have recalled that you have had your bonds rated, and we are proposing to go through the rating process with staff. Currently, the city has a double A-plus rating with Standard and Coors, and so that process would be meeting with the rating agency, with staff. We would have a phone call and talk through the current status of the city, development projects, with finances, and then complete the rating for this specific bond issue. Also, as you've done in the past, we are recommending and moving forward with a competitive underwriting process, meaning that we will put together, work with staff to put together an official statement. It will be distributed to a very wide list of potential underwriters, and then they will respond, and I would be back before you, before you the night of the sale to recommend, and it would be based on the low true interest cost with the, with the bidders thinking. We, we do believe that with a competitive sale, that is the one way to provide the most security, that you are getting the best and most interest rate for, for your bonds. As part of this process, but really on a regular basis, we do look at the city's existing debt. I don't think it's going to be a surprise to say that in our current environment, we are not finding any opportunities to refund existing debt for the city, but we continue to monitor that, and if, if rates change and we start to see the ability to refund bonds for interest savings, we would reach out and definitely be back to have some discussions related to that. So with tonight, there is the resolution to call for the sale of the bond. If you do move forward with that, that really puts in process the motion for staff and Ellers to begin putting together the official statement, distributing it to potential underwriters, working with Standard and Coors for a rating call. Then we would take bits in our office the morning of September 28th and be back there with the results of the sale that night, or council to consider awarding that. With that, then funds would be available on October 19th for the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have through the process or how we're moving forward.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a quick question. In the packet, it said that it would assume a 15-year, year term, but you just said a 10-year term.
I'd say 15.
I am not sure what you mean.
You're going to be proposing a 15-year term for the debt that would be issued for the street reconstruction projects in 2024. But statutorily, we're limited with regards to these, these two items.
Okay.
That is correct, that under statute, it's a 10-year maximum.
I was just clarifying.
But you have, you should.
The memo says 15, the Ellers document.
Right, no, the memo.
That may have been a, yes.
Okay, I was just clarifying between the 10 and the 15.
It is a 10-year term, and that is the maximum statute.
I'm, I'm guessing at the same time Kelly was working with getting amortization tables from Rebecca at the exact same time that she was writing this memo, it might have just been, quite honestly, a human error item when she was typing up the memo.
I just wanted clarification, that's all.
Kelly doesn't make errors.
Just clarification, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Any concerns or motions?
Motion to approve resolution 23-58 authorizing the issuance and sale of $830,000 in general obligation equipment certificates, Series 23.
It's a motion by Josh. Go ahead, Gina, if you don't want to. I'll second it. Sorry, I stole your thunder. Motion by Josh, second by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Okay, item B.
I'll let Rich handle this item.
So council's being asked tonight to receive a feasibility report and call for a public hearing on the 2024 pavement rehab. This is different than the proceedings we just went through for the down, for the reconstruction, but they are both proposed for next year. In fact, we're planning to actually bid them under one contract for bundling just to have more, I guess, more meat on the bone for, for bidders. Someone bringing up the presentation?
I can share it.
I'll, I know you've read it thoroughly, it's in your packet, but I'll, I'll go through it quickly. Next slide, please, or start to, yeah. So we'll talk about your streets, and this may be useful to Gina. Our pavement management approach, pavement 101, how, what we're planning to do for this project, the special assessments, we're right now estimating $1,250.22 per typical household. Some corner lots that have a side longer than 150, maybe slightly more. Large city parcels won't be assessed, but they are included in the, in the footage computation. We'll talk a little bit about construction, and then I want to make it clear that this is not the end of the line. At some point, these streets will need to be reconstructed as well. Next slide, please. We have roughly 25 miles of paved streets that we own and maintain, broken down between local minor collector and major collector streets. If we were going to build all of that in one fell swoop today, it would cost about $30 million. Replacing it would probably cost even more than that because you have to remove everything that's there in order to do that. It's my assertion that your streets are the highest value asset you have that's subject to deterioration. This is a graph of the, well, most of your streets. There's some new ones that I didn't put on here, but the bottom is age. So if, if a street is 20 years old, you have 11 segments out of our database that are 20 years old or more. So this is showing a big bundle of streets right in that 18 to 26-year-old range, which is where we want to be doing these mill and overlay projects, trying to push that life out towards the end of the chart. What that means is that ideally, if they were spread out uniformly, some of every age are doing a few miles every year, and you're getting them all at the right time. We're having to put some off that are in better condition. We're having to accelerate some that might be in worse to try and spread out how much mill and overlay we do in any given project, but it is challenging when most of your streets are roughly the same age. Next slide, please. There's a lot to pavement management between, from maintenance, which is just what it sounds like, to rehabilitation, which is what we're talking about for this project. And the purpose of rehabilitation is not to replace the street, it's not to maintain the street, it's to make the street last, to extend the life. We add strength in one shot to try and get another 10 to 15 years before we reach that point where they have to be reconstructed. Based on the number of miles and an average of every 20 years, you should be doing a mile and a quarter per year. We didn't do any since 2019. We had one planned for '21 or '22, held that off. And so this project is going to be roughly double what we did back in 2019 and double what we'd normally do on a cycle that's every two and a half to three years. And then finally, um, the last step is reconstruction. You replace and replained, uh, remove and replace everything, or reclaim the pavement and use it, um, for a different purpose in the street section to replace that pavement at the end of its useful life. That is what we're doing, uh, in the twenty twenty-four recon in the residential area south of downtown. Uh, but this is rehabilitation instead. Our pavement management system, uh, we took all the streets in town, we looked at the plats, when were they built, what was the section, and we broke the streets up not just by name, but by segment. So every segment might be a part of a street, might be the whole street. There could be five segments on a street or one. But every segment is the same age, the same section, same width. Uh, and that usually follows subdivision phases. The thinking was that if they were built at the same time, everything is the same, same traffic, they'd probably be ready to fail at the same time. So it's a little more granular than if we just looked at streets by name. We gave them a rating. Uh, we did this several times, where we went out, measured distresses, counted bumps, um, different types of cracks, and assigned a value to those, came up with a rating from a hundred down to, you know, zero would be nonexistent. Uh, we tracked that all in a database over three different ratings. And what we were starting to find was one, keeping up these ratings took a lot of time, a lot of data. It was expensive. We thought, well, this is the right thing to do, we want to spend the money where the need is, but is there any shortcuts? We just examined the correlation between age and condition, found it to be reasonable enough for projecting these projects without doing those ratings every two to three years, uh, and saving some money that way. Uh, we may want to every now and then do one, and there is new technology coming out where you, it's a visual thing by automatic, um, sounds like a good idea to me versus someone sitting and looking at a computer screen. It gets extremely tedious, and you have five different people doing it, five, it's subjective. So anyway, you may do a rating or two, or even go back to that in the future as technology improves. But right now, we are just looking pretty much at age, because they, we found a reasonable correlation. Corey goes out and does a quick check, yeah, this makes sense, oh, we better add this one, this one looks good, we can slip this one out. So there's a little bit of fine tuning based on visuals, but it's largely based on hold there. And, uh, we can go to the next slide. So this is what a street looks like if you were to slice it and tip it up and take a look at it into the, into the, uh, section. Uh, so you can see the curbs on each side, gives you an idea what, uh, what most of our curbs look like. You have a, um, s- starting from the bottom up, you have the existing soil that's out there. We typically remove two, three feet, grade that to the shape that's shown, put in two feet of granular barrow, which is essentially sand that's very high strength, even when it's wet. Then we put in a layer of eight inches of aggregate base, which is a very well-grated stone to, to clay that, um, compacts very well and holds its shape, and transfers a lot of load from the pavement to the sand below. Then we have a layer of non-wear course, which is just a little more coarse, uh, layer of asphalt, a tack coat, which is basically a, a prime coat of, uh, bituminous, and then the wearing course, which is a little bit higher-grade, uh, asphalt, finer stone for a smooth riding surface. So there's actually quite a bit to the street, rather than just running out there and throwing some pavement down. There's a lot of planning and preparation and different materials, so that we can transfer the loads from vehicles down to the subgrade below and spread it out as far as we can with as minimal of, uh, thickness of, of pavements. Next slide, please. So when we mill and overlay, we can't just go lay down another inch and a half on top, because it would stick up at the corners by the curbs, because the curbs are going to stay in place. Other than maybe here and there, if there's a badly broken one, we'll pull that out and replace it before this, so that we don't, uh, perpetuate a problem. Uh, but for the most part, curbs will remain in place. So we go in and where that hatching is on each side, that wedge, gets milled out with a special machine, about six feet wide, inch and a half deep at the curb, zero inches out, six inches. That creates a notch, so when we put that inch and a half layer over the whole thing, it sits nice and neat next to the curbs again. So really, two parts to this project as far as the pavement, making room for the new layer and putting on the new layer. I'll just, very briefly, we, um, I, I don't know if I have it on another slide, but some of the other work that happens, there's going to be pad ramp replacements. I think I may cover that in here. Maybe not. Yeah, I do, I do. So pad ramp replacements, wherever it touches, we have to, uh, I mentioned replacing some curbs. Sometimes there's catch basins that have a leak or something, and so we'll, if we know about those, we'll fix those before we do the pavement next to them. And then, uh, adjusting the height of the structures. Can't leave a manhole lid down an inch and a half, it gets too rough, so we have to raise those all up. So the special assessments that I computed and concluded in the feasibility report are based on your city's special assessment policy. Rehabilitation under your policy is assessable, city pays sixty, residents pay forty. I'm proposing unit-based assessments. Basically, everybody kind of benefits the same from this project. It's not a project where you'd break it down by foot. However, larger parcels will get a premium if they, you know, are the equivalent of five houses, for example, they'd get five times as much. So we add up the cost of the project, we take sixty percent of that, or forty percent of that, divided by the total footage, or the total number of units in the project, come up with an assessment rate, and apply that to the number of units for each parcel. Uh, and, um, just to be clear, the city does own some large parcels in this project. I assigned units to those based on their size and included it in the divisor to come up with the assessment rate, although the city doesn't get assessed. It does reduce the assessments that homeowners pay, they're not picking up the city's share, is what I'm trying to explain. Next slide, please. Here's the pedestrian ramps. So under the Americans with Disabilities Act, cities have to have a transition plan for bringing all of their ramps up to current standards over time. It's recognized that it's not practical for cities to go out and, and just replace it, it's quite expensive. So our approach is to upgrade as needed. If there's a problem, someone calls up and say, I use this ramp every day, I can't get over it, or it's broken, or some, that hasn't happened, but if it did, that would be one we would look at. You might recall, we did do some work, uh, over by the, um, Domino's. That was more of a sightline issue, but that did involve a, a, an ADA ramp. Uh, or we would do it if there's an opportunity, say there's some, uh, development needs to extend the road, and it's going to affect an intersection where there's a ramp, we'd have that done at that time. Uh, or when it's required, based on adjacent work like this. Uh, this is an alteration project under the rules, meaning that we do have to upgrade the adjacent ramps. I am limiting those only to ramps that actually abut streets being overlaid. There may be one twenty feet away on an, on an incoming road that's not getting overlaid. We would leave those in place until such time as we do those roads. Uh, we've got twenty-six ramps counted right now. Uh, I already talked about equal benefit for households, so, uh, unless it's a corner lot with a long side, like a hundred and eighty feet, they'd get a little bit of a premium for what's over a hundred and fifty feet. Your policy has a hundred and fifty-foot side yard credit included. Next slide. So, construction, um, we will be, uh, in fact, the notices were mailed this morning. We'll have an information meeting for residents on September eleventh. That will sound a lot like this presentation, just giving the information to those interested. We're planning to conduct that over Zoom to make it as convenient for people that want to participate, uh, to do so as possible. We also put a fair amount of the key information in the notice, uh, in case they, um, have other things going on that night. Tonight, you're going to be, uh, we're asking you anyway, to schedule a hearing for, um, what's the date of that hearing? Twenty, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it'd be after this, um, I think it's the end of September. The second meeting in September would be a public hearing. We're programming this work for the summer of twenty twenty-four. This work is actually pretty easy on residents, there's really minimal access delays. It proceeds pretty quickly. Uh, there's nothing torn up in front of their houses that they can't drive over. They come in, they do the preparatory work, uh, that can take some time, but, um, not too much. Tag coat and overlay will up to, up to, uh, do the streets. And normally, they're by your house in, you know, in less than half a day, uh, when they're actually putting the paving down. Uh, the biggest thing is giving it time to cool, so we will be constantly reminding people, keep your kids and your pets off of it until it feels cool enough to touch by hand, because it, it can burn. Next slide. Uh, this is the last slide, and this is showing a reclaim, uh, reclamation operation, which is what happens, or one way of replacing a street in the future. Again, so people know this is not, uh, a one-time thing. All infrastructure needs maintenance, including streets in Minnesota especially periodically, but they eventually do fail to where it doesn't make sense to put more money into them, it makes more sense to replace them, and that day will come. But we're trying to push that out, uh, a decade or more with this project, so.
Just to, thank you, first of all. But I'm just curious, I mean, what, what do residents that live on that street need access to that street for driving, what do they do? When you're, when the work's going on, do they just park on a different street or something, or how does that work?
Usually, it's, you know, it's during the day, a lot of people aren't home. Uh, but, um, the inspector will go around, or the contractor, we can put it on him, so people have some advance notice to park on a neighboring block or something like that, if they need to get out during that time. But usually, by the time they go by, they lay down the asphalt, that only takes a few minutes, and they're by. It gets rolled, it cools, they can drive on it within an hour or two.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, we're going to have much more challenges over here with the reconstruction with that, because there will be times they won't be able to get in and out. But on a rehab, it's usually pretty short.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
You answered one of mine about nobody know, or nobody's been notified yet, but, or has anybody been notified? It sounds like they just did. Remind, what was the cost of the last one, the last reconstruction project?
It was about.
Do you remember what it was? Because twelve fifty doesn't seem like a lot, and.
It was eleven hundred and some bucks. Yeah.
Would this be a time, and this is really stupid, so it's okay. But, I mean, since Xerxes is included in this, I mean, how much, remind me again, how much would it cost to add a sidewalk on Xerxes, so when I run down there, I don't get clipped by a car coming around the corner?
So seven years ago, it was eight hundred and some thousands, so just double that.
I hate my stream.
And there, is there any grant funding available for any of this kind of work, specifically maybe with ADA ramps, updates? I mean, is there anything from the state that we could access, or the feds even, that relate to this at all?
Nothing comes to mind.
There's the Safe Routes to School program, although I don't know that any portions of this project necessarily qualify for that.
Every time we've looked into safe routes to school in the past, we've discovered there are no walkers in Elko New Market that walk to school, so.
Everybody's bust. There's people that can choose to walk, but the school's advised us, nobody does, so.
Any other questions?
Will the meeting, the, the information on be recorded? Since it's on Zoom, will people be able to access it any other way, other than Zoom?
I guess I don't know why we couldn't record it.
Could we record it and post it? Oh, well, okay, I just, I heard it was Zoom only.
Oh, no, I misspoke. We, we, we did put in the notice that, that it will be presenting from here if they want to come down.
Yeah, Zoom is just the added, added convenience.
Any, any motions or further questions?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-three sixty.
Motion by Kate, any seconds? Second by Gina, all in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, Rich. Next item, RNF Properties.
Uh, RNF Properties has been in a competition to rezone a portion of their property. As mentioned in a earlier, uh, agenda item, they own approximately a hundred and fifty-five acres. It was bound by County Road ninety-one, County Road two, France Avenue, and then the south side down to Spring Hills. Um, the city's comprehensive plan has recently been amended to re-guide the western portion of their property for residential uses. And RNF Properties has now submitted applications to rezone that same area of their property for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, uh, to re-guides the property to a combination of medium and high-density residential. This is the, uh, as depicted on this slide, this is the, uh, city's current comprehensive plan map. A little bit hard to tell on the colors here, um, but this northern portion of the property here was re-guided to high-density residential, and then the southern portion, um, actually just, uh, a portion of that was re-guided to medium density. The, uh, existing, or the former comp plan had the portion north of Whispering Hills already re-guided to medium density. So, um, the intended use, uh, or likely uses for high-density are apartments and townhouses containing more than eight attached units, and medium density allows for a single-family or attached housing up to eight attached units. This is the city's current zoning map, so the property is currently zoned PUD. Again, we're, the application is for rezoning for consistency with the comprehensive plan. There was a public hearing conducted by the Planning Commission on July twenty-fifth, uh, which is a required part of the process. There was public, public testimony received from, um, a handful of residents here in the Whispering Hills development, uh, opposing the rezoning and ultimate, uh, future development of, uh, some lots at the north end of these two streets that abut, uh, the property on the south side. Um, following the public hearing, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the request to rezone, uh, the property to R four, R three and R four. The city council is being asked to adopt findings of fact and ordinance number two seventy-nine, rezoning property from PUD to R three, as well as, uh, adopting findings of fact and ordinance two eighty, rezoning property from PUD to R four.
Thanks, Renee. Sir, what were some of the themes from some of the opposition during the public hearing?
Uh, just didn't want any neighbors on the end of the cul-de-sac.
It wasn't like any real specific issues beyond that that were brought forward? It was just generally not wanting the neighborhood to change?
I would say, um, just questions about which specific trees would need to be removed, which we tried to display the tree removal plan. The applicant, you know, was going to try to remove as few trees as possible to their benefit as well. So, uh, tree removal and just not wanting to change, uh, the natural, the areas rather natural today.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? Or motions?
Motion to, uh, adopt findings of facts, of act and ordinance number two seventy-nine. Can I do both, and two eighty?
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Sir, presentation for item D.
There is, uh, maybe a little more explanation on that. Request, uh, again, applicant is, um, RNF Properties owner of Elko Speedway. Um, this application is to amend the planned unit development zoning, to remove an overflow parking area and amend the legal description associated with their PUD. Um, just a little background, um, Elko Speedway opened in nineteen sixty-four prior to zoning regulations in the state and city, and uses at the site have continued to expand and evolve over the years. Um, the current site is a hundred and fifty-five acres. Um, the land use approvals for the site, uh, because the uses have continued to evolve and change, the land use approvals, uh, were completely amended and restated in two thousand and seventeen through planned unit development zoning. Uh, and all allowed uses and the parameters are contained in, uh, PUD ordinance number one forty-nine. Um, there was one application to amend the ordinance, I think, uh, in twenty twenty-one to allow some seasonal, temporary seasonal outdoor storage of recreational vehicles during the winter months.
to allow some seasonal, temporary seasonal outdoor storage of recreational vehicles during the winter months. Again, uh, just noting, the city recently amended, um, its comprehensive plan to reguide this area, which had previously been guided commercial, um, has now been reguided to resident, uh, medium and high-density residential. And, um, just approval of this amended amendment establishes that medium and high-density residential uses are the desired land uses along County Road ninety-one. The application is to amend the Speedway PUD to remove the thirty, thirty-point-five acres on the west side of the property from their land, uh, the Elko Speedway PUD. This includes amending the legal description, um, as contained in the PUD, uh, in, uh, which is Exhibit A of the ordinance. And also removal of the overflow parking area, which had been identified within that thirty acres. The overflow parking area contained five hundred and sixty spaces. And this would amend several of the development plans that were also associated with that ordinance. So you can see on this slide, uh, their overall, overall property on the left. The area parcel A on the left is proposed to be removed from, um, the Speedway. And then the overflow parking area number six was proposed to be removed. The current, uh, PUD states that a total of two thousand five hundred and eighty-three parking spaces were to be, uh, provided for the Speedway and various uses at the Speedway. Twelve hundred and fifty are associated with the, the Speedway itself. And then two hundred and twenty-three, uh, for the banquet facility. So that totals fourteen hundred and seventy-three. The additional spaces are for, um, simultaneous uses that could occur at the track, including the, uh, movie theater, outdoor movie theater or concerts that may occur. So, um, again, a total of fourteen hundred and seventy-three parking spaces, uh, are required based on Speedway and banquet facilities. Additional parking stalls are required under the PUD to count for simultaneous events. The maximum capacity at the Speedway, uh, based on their PUD for all simultaneous events is eight thousand people. So, they are proposing to reduce their parking from twenty-five hundred and eighty-three to two thousand and twenty-three spaces. This is just amended plan, removing, um, the parking area. Uh, we have, uh, worked with both the Elko New Market Police Department and the applicant to understand their largest events that have occurred and the, the need for that overflow parking area on the west. Largest events have occurred since two thousand and sixteen, with two of them occurring this year. It has been confirmed with the Elko New Market Police, uh, Department and Police Chief that parking was accommodated without the need for that area. And the Police Chief supports the removal of the overflow parking area from their land use approvals. A public hearing was conducted by the Planning Commission on July twenty-fourth. There were no public comments received. And the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the request to amend the PUD. And the city council is being asked to adopt ordinance number two-seventy-eight, amending, uh, PUD ordinance one-forty-nine to amend the legal description and parking plan for the Elko Speedway.
Thanks, Renee. Anyone have any questions or concerns? Or motions?
Motion to approve ordinance number two-seventy-eight.
It's a motion by Kate. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, next is the item E, professional services agreement.
So the city council's being asked to approve a professional services agreement, um, and attach proposal for Blue Net Incorporated. They're a local, um, IT management services company. As the council is aware, for over a decade, we've been working with the city of Savage, who's provided services for a fee to the city. Um, and that has been an excellent working relationship to our advantage. However, their needs have grown to the point where they simply don't have the bandwidth to provide us with those services anymore. The most recent update to their contract, they identified a three-year window where we, they would be working towards transitioning us away from them. And so they have helped us over the last couple of years identify options. After identifying firms, vetting them, the recommendation is to go with Blue Net, uh, to provide those services. The structure of the agreement, as you read the materials, is that they provide a base level of services for a monthly fee. And then any services outside of that are billed out at a regular rate. Staff believes this is the best option of the options we looked at, which range from very large companies, which do this all across multiple sectors and over a large geographic region, all the way down to the single guy shop. This firm, based on size, geography and the recommendations, um, that we've had from their use at other municipalities, um, was the selected firm.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions? Go ahead.
What did we use to pay Savage? Is that what, sorry?
No, it was perfect.
I'll be honest, I don't have that right off the top of my head. Um, we have, we, our agreement with them, uh, was a monthly retain each fee, a monthly fee plus anything beyond that. Not too dissimilar from this. This will be, based on our estimates, slightly more expensive than our arrangement with Savage.
And so the forty grand a year we pay for this, not including the kick activation fee or whatever, onboarding fee. Does that, is, I mean, that's the base. I didn't read through the whole, uh, what's included in it, because I didn't understand all the language. I mean, so does that, like, encapsulate everything that Savage was doing? Or do we still have to above and beyond that forty grand?
There will be, there will be stuff above and beyond that. So, within the twenty-twenty-four draft budget, we've accommodated for that. And that particular line item is not exclusively for these services. It covers additional IT costs that we have within the city as well.
Any other questions? Any motions? I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the professional services agreement with Blue Net. Motion by myself, second by Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item F.
So the city council's asked, being asked to approve a professional services agreement with LRE or Leonard Rice Consulting Water Engineers. Uh, the city has been working with LRE for years. Uh, they provide the hydrogeology consulting services. And typically, in the past, have worked as a sub-con consultant to BMI. They're currently assisting us with the development of the aquifer testing plan. The city engineer had suggested that since it was a very discreet body of work, we may want to consider, um, contracting with them directly. And we basically would avoid the overhead costs for the management of the contract, all the administrative overhead through BMI. And therefore saving us a few thousand dollars. So we're recommending approval of it. This would be retroactive back to May when they began to work on this particular project.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions, comments or concerns?
No, I mean, that clarified things for my brain, because I was wondering why we were going back. So, I, I, and I, I mean, I read, you know, kind of the why, but even as you said it too. It's not that they're now coming to us and saying, holy crap, this took a lot more effort and time than we thought it was. And they're saying, you need to, you owe us for this stuff. It's, I mean, we would have paid it anyway. We would have just paid Bolton and Mink, and then Bolton and Mink would have paid them, so.
I, I do need to note, they will be coming back with a change order because it is taking more than the original scope. We've asked them to do a lot of communication and response to the DNR and to the public. That's beyond the original, um, twenty-five thousand dollar estimate. We'll be reviewing the basis for that, but they will be coming forward with a change order in the not-too-distant future.
But to be clear, at least from my brain, that we would have still had that anyway. And it would have just flowed through Bolton and Mink, been upcharged a premium, right?
Yep, yep.
Any other thoughts? Gina, you look like you want to say something.
Um, just seeing it looks like they were approved by the DNR. So the DNR is okay with LRE?
The DNR doesn't have a role in approving who we use, but DNR staff has repeatedly told us that they have a high degree of respect for this particular firm, based on their past experience with the firm.
Okay, so they work with them for it?
Yes.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the professional services agreement with LRE.
It's a motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all.
Aye.
Alright, one last item. Uh, establish the penalties for water use restrictions violations. This was originally on consent, I had asked it to be pulled purely for the reason is, um, we never really had a discussion or got to an agreement as to what the fine amounts would be. We just kind of gave general acceptance. So I just wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to discuss if anyone felt differently. The only concern I had was, it looked like the way it was read, we're just gonna start fining people immediately.
No, um, we have to have a fine structure in place if we are gonna find people, but we would still continue to move forward with the plan we discussed with the council. There would be a period of public education, we'd do social media, um, the reader board sign, other, um, opportunities we have. We'd ask council to post to their social media, um, acts, uh, sites that they have access to, to make people aware that the watering restrictions are out there. Um, and that we will begin an enforcement of it. And then after a period of time, we'd go out and start doing inspections.
My, my understanding is when we were doing inspections, it was still gonna be a continuation of the education. We weren't gonna start fining people for the first offense.
Correct, initially, we will go out and do warnings for the initial period. We would handle it similar to how we handle winter parking at the beginning of the season. We go out, we issue warnings. But if you've already received a warning, that was your free strike. Or after some period of time, after we've been heavily publicizing it and putting warnings out into the neighborhood, at some point, you just got to know by that point. So, um, the, the second part of that will be a little bit defined based on the level of non-compliance that we're, we're seeing. But the intent is that would be education, education-based. However, we know from past experience in our own community, although it was a decade ago, but also the experience of staff and what there were of in other communities. If there isn't a penalty and it's sufficient enough to make it prohibitive, people will still continue to ignore the ordinance.
I'm all for the penalty, I just, it saw, said first offense, there'd be a fine. I just didn't want to be fining people in the first offense.
There would be a warning, uh, applied. It's the first time that they receive a, a penalty, the first offense would be the fifty dollars.
Does it say that in the memo and I just missed it?
No, I think clarification under the penalty for non-compliance with water use restrictions, maybe we add a, something in there about a warning or-
That's just an implementation, that's enforcement discretion. It's just the first time you receive the penalty, and that's how you would describe it within the ordinance as the first offense.
Okay.
Would be that level.
A first offense equates the time after a warning, basically.
At the, yes.
A warning's concerned, not a-
The warning is not the penalty.
That's what I was looking for, perfect.
Well, since you opened the can, I mean, this is one where, I mean, the fine itself is a nothing fine. So does this cover the cost of our staff going out and, and implementing and actu- actually operationalizing this and overseeing it? I mean-
No, you never recover your costs on an educational approach and, um, even any of-
Take the education out of it. Let's just say it's a repeat fine and repeat occurrences and, I mean-
Probably, the, the fines weren't set to recover costs. The fines were intent to be punitive in nature, um, related to this. We honestly don't know, because when we look at the time and effort that's gonna be required associated with it, we don't know the amount of follow-up time we're gonna have with individuals, the amount of appeal time that might come through the appeals board, how much time Steph is gonna be, um, fielding calls. I can't give you an honest answer as to whether or not it will or not. Usually when you're talking enforcement, the, it's set for a punitive purpose. It's set to be punitive enough to achieve compliance without being over the top. It's not a cost, it's not a fee, it's a penalty, so it's, we didn't use that basis for setting it.
What do you want the number to be, Josh?
I don't know, I just don't think it's a deterrent. For the same reason, when we had this discussion for significant users and, I mean, I like in that language, you know, if they're not, and this would apply in this situation, I would think. You know, if, if a significant user is not in compliance with a local, federal or state, uh, emergency order, we can immediately shut off the water to their properties. So I think that's a pretty good deterrent, uh, or decent deterrent. This, I mean, I-
So you want more teeth to it?
I want more teeth to it. If we're actually gonna do it, we should have more teeth to it.
I'm on board with that.
I'm on board with that.
So what teeth are you talking about?
Right.
I'd just say bigger fine, jump them in the next tier.
Go one hundred, one fifty, two hundred.
Yeah, it's fine with me. That's not enough for Josh, though?
I don't, I mean, we'll see, I mean, I just, the way it's currently written, it's like, I, I just, I know people that are just gonna say, eh, whatever. I mean, they're already paying three hundred bucks a month, four hundred bucks a month in water, fifty extra dollars, it doesn't matter.
So based on, on past experience, um, for the people who don't necessarily are violating, there's also a perception of how punitive it is from people who, whether or not they're, they're violating. So, part of it is whether or not it'll stop the person, but part of it is, will the, will your constituency believe that the penalties are fair and reasonable, or you guys are nuts, that's over the top? I can't answer that question, but that is something that you should consider as well, the perception of the fine structure as well.
That's a good point.
Um, we know that right now, we're, um, have water usage that's almost three times what we have during the winter months. That's, since we don't have any large users or process users on the system, that's almost all entirely irrigation. If you run the basic numbers, that is a lot of irrigation that we have going out there. Based on anecdotal evidence from Public Works when they're out in the field, there is a lot of, um, non-compliance based on day of the week and hours of the day. So, the approach was considered to be not to be too heavy-handed. We know that we have non-compliance, let's try and address that first. See how much reduction in usage we have and see how much compliance we can achieve. The reality is, we don't and haven't been for a decade actively enforcing it, meaning that we're going out looking for people, issuing citations and warnings. We haven't done that in a long time. So, we believe that over time, um, people become more, less, uh, less compliant, um, over time. So, we believe that there, that we're likely to achieve a substantial reduction just through compliance.
What about, um, removing any other discounts potentially with any people who are not complying regularly?
Like the senior discount and stuff, or what do you mean discount?
Yeah, I know, that's one I know, but any other, I don't know if they're making any other discounts?
That's, that's the only one we have. That could be a, another item is that eligibility. So right now, there are certain eligibility, but usually it comes down to, do you pay your account or not? That could be an eligibility element that you could put in, that you would no longer be eligible for participation in that program if you're found to be non-compliant or non-compliant over X number of times.
And I think, I mean, it's, it's, oh, God, I'm just thinking of these appeal boards. You know, thinking of putting more criteria in what, you know, it, now it's, we're not only gonna look at what was their last three years of payment history and, and everything else, how many times have you violated the, I mean, just so we just think through it. I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, but it, it, we may disqualify a lot of people from an unintentional use kind of thing. And I don't want to do that unnecessarily if they're paying a fine. They're, I mean, it'd be like me getting pulled over, like if I speed regularly, which I don't, um, you know- Yeah, no, so, so, you know, it, you know, if I pay my fine and I do my ti- do my time, do whatever, you know, I don't want that to come back to bite me for another process that I could qualify for. So, I would say we don't include it, at least with the unintentional water use thing, until maybe we see-
I, I think there may be something to that. You know if you speed and you get caught, you pay a fine. It's harder to communicate that if you have a violation, there are these other indirect things that you potentially might not even be aware of or even contemplating in that particular point in time. I think would, we, I think it, there's a little bit of administration, but, um, for the individuals, I, I agree when you are doing enforcement. It's clear to be, this is the penalty for doing this, and it's kind of discreet to that violation.
Where do we have this information? It's in our newsletter, or it's in-
Related to-
Is it related to the water, um, regulations and watering?
So that's something typically we would put out seasonally within the, within the newsletter. For purposes of publicizing it here.
Right.
We don't have a newsletter for a little while, so we would be relying upon social media and putting it on the sign. And that's also part of the reason why staff doesn't believe it's appropriate to go straight to the penalty, you get a warning. We have found in the past, when we had to do it, and again, this was back in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven timeframe, the warnings actually achieved a pretty, um, a certain level of compliance. Because once people start getting the orange sticker in everybody's front door, um, in the neighborhood, word gets around, people tend to be more compliant. And then typically the, at that time, we didn't have this penalty, it was a citation. Once you start issuing those, word gets around the neighborhood really quick. And we found that compli- the remaining compliance came together fairly quickly after that.
Could a warning be added to the city water bill that book each month?
I can check with Stephanie, there is a little text item on the bottom, but it's very small. And past experience has shown that people don't actually read it.
I, I do, but I, I look at it, it's so hard.
But I can talk to Steph. She, we do put little, we have put little messages in there, I can talk to her about it. Unfortunately, it's not long enough to explain- Unfortunately, it's not long enough to explain the ordinance. The most we would be able to do is like, city watering restrictions are in effect, but the reality is they're in effect all the time, so.
So Kate wants to double the fines, how do you view it?
If that's good, is that what you want?
I'm good with that.
So Josh just stated your idea.
Yeah, I was just reiterating. And Gina wants, Gina wants to hit up the old people, so. No, I.
I'm, I'm fine with it as is, just because I, I do think the majority of people are going to react the way we want to react if they were to get a warning, um, I just.
I suppose we could always look at it next year, if they're still abusing it, then next year we raise it.
I think more times, I think more times than not, we're just going to have people that just didn't think about it and where maybe a husband and wife didn't communicate that they already got a warning or some, I, I just think there's going to be.
I leave my stupid sensor timer on all the time, and I turn it on to check where my heads are, and then I forget to turn it off for the next.
Right.
Whatever time, and, oh, it's an odd day or whatever. Now, we're not going to be, it, it, it wouldn't be complaint-based, I assume, or maybe it would be complaint-based, or?
No, we would be. We would, so initially, we would be having staff come in in the wee-wee hours of the morning to basically do inspections through the neighborhoods, because that's when people will water. And if, and if they're.
Closed.
Yep, and if they're intentionally violating, that's also when they water, because nobody's around to catch me. So what we did in the past is former chief Steve and Cory came in around three, two-thirty-three in the morning, and they drove through the neighborhoods, so.
You have a fun job.
It probably won't be, it probably won't be Brady and Cory this time, but, um.
Any other, uh, thoughts or, I mean, does any, I want to keep it as is, do you guys feel strongly about changing?
That's fine, we can look at it later.
Motion to approve ordinance, uh, two seventy-six and two seventy-seven.
It's a motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion by council? Or motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, meeting's adjourned.